And whereas, when Battalion Chief McGuire arrived, there was heavy smoke coming from the eaves and vents around the house with the back of the structure fully involved with fire. And whereas, the crew of Truck 3 immediately went into search and rescue operations, and Captain Connolly of Truck 3 was alerted by two occupants that a person was trapped in a room on the west side of the structure with heavy smoke coming from the window. And whereas, Truck 3 deployed the pre-connected attack line, and Captain Connolly attempted to enter the window to locate the victim but was unsuccessful due to heavy smoke conditions. With fire advancing and conditions worsening, the decision was made to enter the structure with an attack line to attempt to locate and rescue the victim. And whereas, Truck 1 arrived to assist with search and rescue and was directed to the same west window. Truck 1 crew member firefighter Altamirano entered the window but was unable to locate the victim due to heavy smoke conditions. And whereas, without hesitation firefighter Stafford entered the window for another attempt, firefighter Stafford was able to locate the victim under a chair. He was then able to lift the victim out the window to other Truck 1 crew members who subsequently loaded the victim to an awaiting ambulance. And whereas, the selfless actions of Stillwater firefighters afforded the victim the best opportunity for survival. Now therefore, I William Joyce, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the City of Stillwater hereby recognize the heroic efforts of firefighter Sonny Stafford, firefighter Irving Altamirano, and the crew members of Truck 3, Truck 1, Engine 1, Engine 2, and Battalion 1 on October 27, 2020, and offer them our sincere thanks.
Picture?
Would you like a big picture? Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate the work that everyone at Stillwater Fire Department does. Those are incidents that we don't hear much about, but you guys are putting your lives on the line on a regular basis to save members of our community, and we truly and sincerely appreciate those efforts. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item four on the agenda, which is the Consent Docket. There are four items on the Consent Docket tonight. Councillors, questions, comments, or a motion on the consent?
Motion to approve the Consent Docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. Tonight, we should have our electronic voting system up and running, so I'm just going to ask you all to vote using your keypad. We'll see how it goes. Four of us voted.
It's flashing over here.
Not the flashing one, yeah.
Not the flashing one?
That's your right.
Well, we only got four, so. Counselor Hawkins doesn't seem to be working. It's not a hazing thing, I promise. I mean, it might be. It might be. Come down. It's not for us.
I always assume it's user error.
We're going to give it a couple seconds here, and I may just ask you to call it for all.
So you have to wait until it's all lit up and then press the button?
Okay. Voting out?
Sure. We'll vote on the motion and the second to approve the Consent Docket. There we go. With a vote of five to zero, the Consent Docket is approved. Thank you. All right. Item five is public comment on items not scheduled for public hearings. Both of the ones we have signed up are for public hearing, so we don't have anybody sign up on this item. So we will jump down to public hearings. Item seven. Item 7A is require receive. Hold on a second. I'm sorry. Give me a second here. No, this is. All right. Got my pages mixed up. We are on 7A, public hearings, receive public comment regarding the proposed operating budget for the City of Stillwater for fiscal year 2021-22. We had a Scrivener's error on our last public hearing for this item, so we're having a second one. As we're done. Melissa? Are you speaking? Okay. I wasn't sure if you were here to speak on this or not.
Subbing in for Finance Director Kristi Clark this evening. And just to review real quickly, we are following the Oklahoma Municipal Budget Act, which requires us prior to June 1 to submit a budget to the City Council. We are also supposed to hold a public hearing, and after the public hearing, we have seven days to get the budget adopted. City of Stillwater has adopted a, held to a somewhat accelerated schedule over the last few years that's really gotten us into a good routine. We usually hold that public hearing in April, and as the mayor mentioned, we had a Scrivener's error in the date, so we're holding a second public hearing with the corrected date. And then we will bring back the budget to you all on the 17th of May for adoption. That gives staff six weeks to get that budget loaded into the accounting system and so that it's ready to be deployed on July 1. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Melissa. So nothing's changed in the budget since our last?
That is correct. It has remained static since the March 22 study session when you all reviewed the budget with Finance Director Clark.
Okay. And John, did we have good notice for the public hearing for this meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions? This time, I will open the public hearing. We don't have anyone sign up to speak on this item, so I will close the public hearing. And there's no action needed on this item tonight?
None at all.
So we'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Melissa. Item 7B is receive public comment and approve a request from Stillwater Habitat for Humanity for a Planned Unit Development and associated MAP amendment to rezoned property addressed as 505 East 18th Avenue from light industrial to small lot, single-family residential planned unit development. This is CC-21-77. Mr. Gross?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. I'm Lance Gross, Planning Manager for Community Development. Stillwater Habitat for Humanity has put together a PUD called the Fern Street cottages, which creates 14 single-family homes. The intent of a planned unit development is to permit flexibility within the development concerning bulk standards and size requirements, and also to encourage accessibility and affordable housing. The hatch pattern on the map indicates the subject site, which is a 1.5 acre site owned by Stillwater Habitat for Humanity. The property is located west of South Perkins and north of 19th. This is an aerial view looking to the north. The yellow polygon is a subject site, and it's just south of the Habitat store at 18th and Fern. And you can see South Perkins over here and East 19th right here. The property is currently zoned IL, light industrial, and IL will be located to the north of the site. MH, or mobile home zoning, will be located to the west, and RT zoning will be located to the east. And the city limits is right here at 19th. The proposed PUD will have an RSS-based zoning, which is residential, small lot, single-family. This is a site plan submitted by Gossen Associates. The PUD will create a pocket neighborhood that will include a central parking area, common open space indicated in green, 14 single-family homes in pink, and sidewalks that connect all of the homes. This is a typical elevation of the larger four-bedroom home that's proposed, which will have lapped siding and brick veneer. And I'm happy to answer any procedural questions concerning the PUD application. And Stephen Goss, the applicant's representative, is here as well to answer questions on the project.
Thank you, Lance.
Councillors, any questions for Lance at this point? Okay, thank you. I will, at this time, open the public hearing and ask Mr. Goss if he'd like to come say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. Stephen Goss with Gossen Associates, 113 East 8th Avenue. Here on behalf of Habitat, we also have Hillary Hunt, the Executive Director, so after I'm done, she can talk more about the project in general. But as Lance said, pocket neighborhood. The lots are typically a little smaller than standard. We've got this shared parking in the middle. I don't like looking at myself. Can we get the site plan? So, I've got it here. You guys don't. The house is around the edge. The parking's in the middle with access off of Fern Street. The plan for screening is to have a six-foot opaque fence on the north and the west. We're still on 19th and Fern, trying to figure out if that's a solid fence or kind of a staggered fence, so there can be some airflow through it. Water and sewer will be extended to the site. We're working with all those utilities. Reduced lot sizes. The parking at two spaces per home. For three- and four-bedroom homes, you're required to have one space per bedroom, but based on the use and what Habitat sees in their other homes, the two cars per structure is enough. So that's it, kind of from the site layout and development. I guess Hillary can talk, and we can answer any questions later. All right.
Okay. Thanks, Stephen.
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. This is a project that Habitat was awarded funds through the Stillwater Makes a Change program in 2020, and a program that was born out of initially a desire to create a community-based housing plan, which is a method that's used in Tulsa and Oklahoma City, but it's never been done in Stillwater, and is also a way to maximize our existing land space and house as many families as possible in this community that we serve. So, if you have any questions.
Councillors?
I don't have any questions, but I can't think of a better use for a PUD, and I think, you know, we have families that go into the Habitat, and what a wonderful sense of community for them as they are getting their first home and getting that settled, and if there's more than one family, they can kind of, you know. I do have a silly question. This may be a silly question. The house is going to look different. I saw the house plant up there, but there will be some variation in?
There will be some variations. We also let all of our homeowners select their paint color. Most of our brick is donated, so we sort of get a luck of the draw, is there's some variety there. So we hope to let our homeowners personalize it as well, and we do look to this community to be a leadership development program for the homeowners as they create their homeowners' association.
Absolutely.
Is there something, a place for people, like if you have someone come visit you, that they have an extra vehicle? Is there parking available somewhere else other than the two spots that a home would be allotted?
We are looking into ways to, we're going to have a playground area, and we're looking to incorporate a ways to allow for a guest parking option there. We have, I think, two additional spots that we can hope to accommodate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. This time, I'll close the public hearing and ask Lance to come back up and let us know if there's a recommendation.
Let's see. The Planning Commission made a recommendation by a vote of five to zero for approval.
Councillors, any further questions for Lance? I will just ask quickly, Lance, there's just the one area for ingress and egress. Is that, I mean, from the density of the neighborhood, that meets current codes in terms of being able to get in and out?
Yes. There is a regulation that states 30, anything that has greater than 30 lots requires two points of access.
Okay.
And this only has 14, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councillors, any further questions? Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendation and approve the MAP amendment with a planned unit development for the property located at 505 East 18th Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation on this planned unit development. Any further comments? Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Takes us to item 7C, receive public comment regarding citizen input on proposed 2021 Community Development Block Grant projects and approve the project selection. This is CC-21-84. Mr. Dormand, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Cindy Gibson?
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. We're in time this evening. This evening, before you, is the opportunity for the 2021 CDBG project selection. CDBG, Community Development Block Grant through Oklahoma Department of Commerce for HUD funding allows the city to do several little projects, projects for development of the city. We took two public input meetings. The first one unfortunately was during all the bad weather, so we had no turnout. The second one, we did have a couple of people visit with us, but we also took emails and used Speak Up Stillwater as opportunities to take input. There were several very fun and innovative suggestions, as seen in your packet. However, for an item to be considered for CDBG, it has to meet the national objective of benefiting persons of low to moderate incomes. Therefore, after reviewing the projects that were suggested, the following were, sorry, I forgot to bring them by PowerPoint here. They didn't bring them. Anyway, sorry. The projects that are eligible are the grocery store on Wheels, public infrastructure for habitats planned Fern Street cottages, improvements of sidewalks, curb signalizations for pedestrians, and the previously approved project for 2019 of the drainage improvement project on 12th for Duncan to Duck. That's a mouthful to say. However, due to COVID and some bid problems for the 2019 12th Street project, that project was shelved. Any questions?
Is Staff Rec. editing? Well, I do believe we have someone here to speak on this. Ms. Crowley, yeah?
Yeah, so.
I will, at this time, open the public hearing. We do have Patty Crowley signed up to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Councillors. As you're well aware, my husband and I do live there at 1206 South Duncan, and we are impacted by flooding there. I do have a video that I made myself of a major flooding that we had in 2018, and then also have a picture of that drainage ditch behind our house of a tree that's laying down in the ditch itself from the ice storm that we had back in October. If you'd like to see that picture or the video. So I am just basically speaking on behalf of my husband and I and our other neighbors that are, there's three houses there on that corner that are affected by any flooding. And we, this time of year, we just dread any major storms because it comes clear about halfway down Duncan in front of our house.
I think most of us have been down 12th Street in that area when it's rained and?
Yeah, it gets about knee-deep there.
Yeah.
And cars have stalled out, and it's come all the way up to our doorstep. It's gone down in the basement of the house on the corner, and then the rent house on the south side of us, it has come up two feet in the living room there. So it's pretty bad flooding.
Well, we appreciate you being here and sharing your concerns.
Do you, does anyone see this picture?
I don't know if we can pass it around or?
There's, like, that branch hinders water in that ditch.
Is it still there?
Oh, yeah. It's been there from the ice storm in October, and it's over, hanging over a power line.
We might need to get that cleaned up. Is that, I assume that's a public easement right over there?
Mm-hmm. There's a drainage ditch, and then the city mows on both sides of that drainage ditch. They've already started mowing this year, and I'm surprised, you know, that nothing's been said about that.
Well, we appreciate you coming here and letting us know.
Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It wasn't a recognized public comment right there. Okay. Cindy, what's Staff's recommendation on this item?
Staff's recommendation is a motion to select the drainage improvement project along 12th between Duck and Duncan as the project for the 2021 CDBG.
So I think the, my pressing question is, is the budget going to be okay this time? Are we, we think we'll be able to get it done for the money?
We have been awarded $228,000 as the Department of Commerce HUD portion, which if we do, we're required to do a one-to-one match, so that leaves us $456,000 plus. I know Mr. Carnes' group has been reworking the design and working up the cost estimate, and he is aware of the dollar amount that we're trying to get to.
Thank you.
If this project is selected, we will return for approval of the application along with the cost estimate and provide budget funding options.
Councillors, further questions?
These funds are so important to provide projects that we wouldn't, you know, it's very challenging to find these lump sum dollars for these types of projects, and it's so important to find a project that's really going to make an impact and make a difference since we have that one-to-one match and all of that. I do, I have the same concern. As I recall, we were quite over budget when we went out to bid. I know construction's only gotten more expensive in the recent, in recent years, and I have the same concerns about whether or not we can afford this project. I'll just cross my fingers and hope that we can redesign. I certainly would hate to see us let go of another round of funding.
Yeah, absolutely. So from a timing perspective, Cindy, if we select this tonight and you come back with budget numbers and approval, will we have time if, for whatever reason, there's a problem? Will we have time to use the money somewhere else?
The application deadline has been moved up on us this year to June. However, like I said, Mr. Carnes' group has been reworking the design, and he is aware of the deadline. I would anticipate us being able to meet that deadline.
Okay.
And requirement for financial.
Well, we certainly know that this project needs to get done, so.
Yes, sir.
It makes sense to try to get it done with this money as well. I will, at this time, close the public hearing because I don't think I did that yet, and then I'll ask, Councillors, if you have any further questions? Or is there a motion on the item?
Motion to select the drainage improvement project along 12th Avenue between Duck and Duncan Streets as the project for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant, Small Cities Grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to select this project for the CDBG grant. Councillors, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Thank you, Cindy, and thank you, Ms. Crowley, for being here. That takes us to item 7D, receive an update on the CB, CDBG CV program. That's a lot of letters. Program administration requirements and public comment regarding the CDBG release of funds for Phase 2 Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents. Mr. Dormand, do we have good notice on this?
Yes, sir.
Becky Taylor?
Good evening, Mayor and Councillors. Becky Taylor, Chief Civic Innovation Officer. I wanted to provide you this evening with an update on the CDBG CV grant that is intended to fund Phase 2 of the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program. Last time I was up here speaking to you, it was about Phase 2, and we had just received notice that we were awarded this grant. Since being awarded the funds and council approving Resolution Number 2021-10, city staff became aware of additional guidelines and restrictions as found in the CDBG CV Policies and Procedures Manual, a document that was not published at the time the application was made and based on application guidelines document that we received, and this document we did not know about until two weeks ago. The main challenges that were recently discovered, I just wanted to walk through with you real quick about the CDBG CV funds are, one, City of Stillwater must obtain proposals for the services that Our Daily Bread was going to provide through a RFP process. This requires a submission of the RFP to a minimum of three organizations to obtain detailed proposals, and we just released this RFP this morning, and proposals are due back to us by May 14th. The city, number two, the City of Stillwater must complete an environmental review once council approves the release of funds. This project, however, is considered categorically exempt from the review because it is a public service project, but ODAC holds it for 15 days to allow for public comment or objection before releasing the funds. And both the RFP process and the 15-days holding period delays the start of Phase 2 of our program. Number three, additional paperwork is required in the application process in addition to a notary needed onsite for the applicant. And those additional forms are the rent reasonableness checklist and fair market rent certification has to be completed for every applicant requesting rental assistance. The rental agreement plan landlord statement has to be completed by each landlord. A household or duplication of benefits for assistance affidavit has to be completed by the applicant, a self-declaration form, and then, of course, the original application. And then fourth, if rental assistance is made for over 100 days and if the dwelling unit was built before 1978, a lead-based paint test will be required for the unit before assistance can be provided. The new requirements found in the CDBG CV Policies and Procedures Manual make it increasingly more difficult to process for all involved parties, the City of Stillwater, the program administrator, and, most importantly, the applicant. City staff, city staff can definitely make our way through the additional requirements, and we are already doing so, and whichever nonprofit ends up as a program administrator will make its way through the additional requirements as well. But my main concern is the Stillwater resident who needs this relief today. From the earliest discussions that led to Phase 1, the purpose of this assistance program was to make an immediate impact in the lives of our neighbors who were experiencing financial hardship due to COVID-19. And for the last four years of my career, I worked every day with people who fell in the income category that we were trying to help with Phase 2. I came into contact with nearly 1,200 families each month that needed help and got to know them and their stories well. And the last thing these families needed is added barriers placed between them and the help they need. My overwhelming fear and concern is that these additional requirements make it increasingly more difficult for the residents we want to help through this program to receive the help they need now. Additionally, if the CDBG CV funds are not distributed within three years, the City of Stillwater may be required to pay back the entirety of the award, funds both dispersed and not yet dispersed. I wanted you to hear this concern before discussing the release of funds so that you had all the information available to you before moving forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councillors, somebody else want to talk before I start ranting?
I think because I work with grants often in my work life, I realize that free money comes with a lot of strings attached to it. It's disheartening to see that there are so many strings to a community that has so many challenges to address and deal with those strings attached. But my overwhelming hope would be that we- But my overwhelming hope would be that we just find our way through this, right? That we have the ability on staff and with whoever wins the RFP process, that they are able to overcome those hurdles and streamline the process for the people that we're trying to help. It's still funding available for these folks. There certainly is help in that regardless of the hurdles they have to overcome to get to it. But I'm not surprised, I guess, a little bit. But I just would hope that we would do everything we can to take these additional processes and streamline them.
And do we, do we have ideas of things we can do to help make this an easier? I'm concerned with the burden it puts on the applicants as well and it being a more difficult process for them to negotiate. Do we have ideas of how to help make that an easier process with this? I mean, are there, I, I, I don't know, are there FAQs? Examples of things, how they need to do things? Their way to work with landlords who own a lot of property that people might be applying to, to help mitigate some of the barriers?
Sure, and we can do all, I mean, like you said, I mean, we'll do whatever we need to do to make sure that funds get to the people that need it. And whichever organization is chosen through the RFP process, they'll be chosen based on what they can provide for the applicant for sure and the process that they can make as smoothly as possible.
Becky, is your concern that we would have difficulty allocating all these dollars and that we would end up in the scenario that I mentioned at the end, that we hadn't been able to disperse all of the dollars that we've been awarded and would then have to pay it back?
So before I knew of any of this, these requirements, before any of us knew about it, I would have said, well, we're getting, the money will be gone very quickly, just like it was in Phase One. But after reading through this and the team of us on staff working through all of this, that is a concern of mine. I just am concerned with all of the additional barriers it places for the applicant. That, I'm not sure if that is possible. But I mean, we, three years is a long time, so maybe.
How often, or I can't imagine other communities if they have, I mean, have other ones received this type of funding? And how often do these entities realize that it seemed like a good idea at the time to put these things in place, but it, it's making it harder for them to actually get the dollars out? I mean, I know we have three years, but is there a likelihood that those things will change or? I mean, this is new, so it's a new type of, it's a new type of situation. And may, I guess, I'm a Pollyanna and want to think, okay, if other communities are going to have this much struggle and there's just money that's not being utilized, maybe the, maybe there'd be some possibility that, that some of these things will change.
The CDBG has a very thick set of requirements and process and framework. And it just, that's been their bureaucracy, I think, for a very long time in that program. I'm sad to see it in like an emergency relief-type program. I'm sad that they weren't able to see their way out of that. But I think it's just their fallback. I think that's just the way their program has been designed.
Gotcha.
I think Counselor Zanotti's point, though, if, if we know of other communities that have received this type of grant and how they are negotiating, perhaps we could get some ideas of things we could do that could help us as well.
Of course.
Well, it's not very often we sit up here and say, please figure out a way to spend this money. And I have every, every faith that staff can, can navigate these waters. You know, this is going to be one of those things, I think, that we're just going to, you know, kind of play it as we go. And the difficulties that the patrons run into that are, that are trying to access these funds will tackle as they come. And like you said, three years is a long time. I have every faith that we can, that we can do this. So I don't want to be too discouraged here, but it certainly is frustrating in the setting of an emergency relief fund that we have to, like you said, Counselor Jaloski, that they can't pull back their bureaucracy, bureaucratic tendencies. But I have every faith that we can overcome these hurdles. You guys are good at what you do, so.
Have we maxed out the administrative dollars that are allowable in that grant? Would it help to look at the administrative allocation that we're allowed to make sure that we have staff that can support in a bigger way?
For this specific grant, we can use up to 6%. And that would, that's within the, for the organization that administers the program. Is that what?
Yeah, so they allow, so there's up to 6% of the total grant award would be allowable for administrative. So we just might want to make sure that they use that 6% if that allows them to hire more staff or to, rather than try to... Usually, we want as much money as possible going towards the program and less towards administrative. But maybe this is an example of a time where we need to maximize the administrative so that they can have staff support to get over these hurdles.
Definitely, and that's included in the RFP that was released, the 6%.
Becky, on the, the three-year timeframe, is the, is there a, a window where these expenses had to have been incurred? You know, I, I think it was, I remember hearing like after some date, but before some other date, you have to have had these? Or is it an open-ended end date that you can prove that you, COVID-19 affected your income in a way that?
They have to have been incurred by January, January, some, the date of, I think, the Declaration of Emergency is 2020, or the first case in the United States, that date. And they, I think, as far, Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can continue if the occurrence has happened within the three years, as long as it's delinquent.
And they have to prove some sort of, that COVID affected their, their ability to pay the bill, right? So, but there's no like, it doesn't have to have occurred prior to an emergency declaration ending or?
Not that it, it did not say that in any of the literature I read.
I asked just because I know, I heard the governor is ending our state's emergency declaration tomorrow, which doesn't make any sense, but I don't know. I mean, if that kind of thing would affect people's ability to claim these funds, then, you know, that shortens the window significantly and creates a lot more risk. So I, I, I mean, it's just, it's honestly, it's appalling that this kind of funding would be distributed with these kinds of, this kind of red tape. I mean, it just is. It's, I mean, billions of dollars have been printed by the federal government to help fund all kinds of different programs. And honestly, this feels more restrictive than it took to go get a small business loan.
It is, it is more restrictive.
I, I just, I, it's appalling. It, it is honestly appalling that, that we would make it this hard for people to pay their rent in a time like this. And so I trust that you all and whoever we select as the, as administrator will do everything possible. But I, I certainly do, I would be concerned about the idea that if we only get $300,000 distributed within that timeframe, that they, federal government will come back to us and say, you've got to pay us not only the $200,000 you didn't spend, but also the 300 you did spend. That's a, that's a huge problem. And that's a, again, insane sort of requirement to put on a grant like this. I mean, we're going to be trying to help people and they're going to, they're going to make us pay them back? It's, I, I don't know what else to say about it other than it's absolutely appalling that this is the way that this would be set up. But we want to help people, we want people, you know, we want to give as much, you know, opportunity as we can for folks to get their, their bills paid and, and cover the, the costs of, of this pandemic. So I, I mean, to me, it feels like something we kind of just have to do everything we can to make it happen. Mr. McNichol, did you have a comment?
To, to allay a little bit of financial fears, there was some recovery money that we still have that is unapproved rate that we could place in account with reserve just in case they do pull any back. It's hard for me to believe that they would do that, but the rules that they have in place are pretty hard to believe, too. So that's something we could do to, where's Melissa? To ensure that there's not a half-million-dollar financial disaster in the future.
Okay. So Becky, do we need a, is this just an update or do we need to take any action tonight?
Cindy's going to get up and share the rest. We're tag teaming.
There's more?
Part two.
Is this like the good news and she's coming up with the bad news?
Good evening again, and thank you for your time. And Becky's news was not all bad. It is a good opportunity for everyone and, and staff will make it work somehow. So to follow up with this, every CDBG grant requires a release of funds in a public hearing. So in anticipation of approval this evening, we have prepared the environmental review. And this project is categorically exempt because it is a public service. It's not a construction or, you know, digging up dirt-type project. So we ask you to consider approving the release of funds and authorizing the mayor to sign the documents and submit them to Department of Commerce for their 15-day hold. And we can move forward after the RFP and selection of the administrator for the collection of the documents. Any questions?
Counselors?
Sounds like we need to get this, get this started.
It sounds like somebody needs to make a motion then.
I will make a motion. Motion to authorize the mayor to sign the release of funds documents and just, and staff to proceed with the request to sub, oh, sorry, with request submitted to ODAC.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to proceed with the CDBG process on these funds. Please vote. With a vote, uh-oh, it went back out. We lost Counselor Hawkins' button again.
Only eight seconds left.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second to accept staff recommendation on this item. So Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Thank you, Becky and Cindy and everybody on staff for what I'm sure has been a whole lot of fun trying to figure all this stuff out. We appreciate all their work. That takes us to item eight, General Orders. First up, we're going to receive the annual report on the McMurtry Friends from Jill Van Egman.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here to share all the exciting things that are happening out at Lake McMurtry. I'm Jill Van Egman, Executive Director. The mission of Lake McMurtry Friends is to enrich quality of life by providing opportunities to engage in sustainable outdoor recreation, environmental education, and nature conservation. I always trip over that. And we've really seen the importance of this mission, especially since the pandemic began and all of the people that are looking to come out to Lake McMurtry, not just for physical health benefits, but for mental health benefits. And it's been really amazing. So our fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30, so these numbers are only reflective through April 22. But currently, we have 748 annual pass members that are active. We've had 28,000 day visitors. We've had roughly 11,000 RV and tent campers, making that a total visits of 39,024 since July 1. It's not just our local communities that are coming out to the lake, but we have people coming out that are repeat customers from all over the country. So we've had 39 different states represented in the last, since July 1 and 139 different Oklahoma communities represented. The most common states represented, our repeat customers, are Oklahoma, Kansas, Colorado, Missouri, and Arkansas. And the most common Oklahoma communities represented are Stillwater, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Edmond, Enid, Broken Arrow, Guthrie, Perkins, and Perry. So since July 1, we've sold 6,585 day passes. Our day passes are $6 for daily activities and you can partake of all of our amenities out at the lake for just $6. Our projected sales, looking at our historic data, puts us at 10,375 by the end of our fiscal year because we are in our busiest season. So you can see that almost 1,000 increase over last year and almost 2,000 increase over the year before. I have to say, our day use fees went through the roof when the pandemic began and have just remained consistent since then. Our annual passes, so far this year, we've sold 527 annual passes. Looking historically at our data, our projected sales will be 750 by the end of this fiscal year. So you can see how we've definitely grown in our number of active annual members and our users. We're very excited. Our annual members are very dedicated to the park. They're amazing guests and they really do a lot to volunteer and help keep our park maintained the way we want it to be maintained and how people have come to expect it. Here you can see, since we formed our public-private partnership, the city subsidy that we've been awarded and then our revenue. In 2017, 2018, we did hit a spike of 227,000. 18, 19, we had the flood and so our park was actually closed for six weeks during our busiest season. So we did take a big hit in revenue. But last year, even though all of our overnight activities were closed for two months when the pandemic began, we still saw a rise in our revenue generation. And this year, we're projected at 252,613, judging by our historic data. Our social media, online presence has really grown in the last year. You can see that we have 4,728 Facebook followers. We have a lot of engagement on our Facebook posts. We're doing a lot of live streams. We did some educational content online over the last year. And so our Facebook followers are growing. Our website in the last year has had 29,000 unique visits and 97,600 page views, which make that three average pages per unique visit, which is up 228%. So you're able to book online for our camp slides. You can buy day passes online, you can buy annual memberships online. And so we've seen a real increase in the traffic on our website. Our Instagram, we have 1,452 followers. We are down a little bit in our impressions. This is just for the last month, but our marketing coordinator had surgery and she's been out, so we haven't had any posts. And so we definitely see the impact that that has made. And, and I make sure to tell her that all the time, she needs to come back because that's made a difference. In response to COVID, we did, I think, act pretty quickly. We did have our overnight events closed for two months, but we did have our daily use fees or our daily use amenities open each day. We made sure that we required our employees to wear masks and requested them of our guests, providing them a mask if they didn't have one available. Most people were very willing to wear the mask, I have to say. That was very great. People think, oh, we're going to the lake, I'm going camping, or I'm going fishing. And they would come in without a mask, just not thinking about it. But then when we suggested they take one of that we provided for them, they were all, most of them were very gracious. We did install acrylic shields on our counters along with hand sanitizer. We limited the number of people in our shops. We've opened that back up. We did have it blocked off a little bit, but we have opened that back up now. We did encourage our park guests to socially distance and to wear masks if they couldn't. We did a lot of live streams, a lot of Facebook posts, different things like that, just informing our, our users of what we expected or what we hoped that they would do when they were out at the lake. We did close our pavilion rentals for quite some time because we just couldn't monitor how many people they were inviting out, whether or not they were following our COVID protocol. But we have since opened that up and we are limiting the number to 50 still and encouraging them to socially distance. We have started doing some projects with outside organizations. We had the Lake McMurtry Trail Run in April. We had the Lake McMurtry Trail Run in April. They had 300 people come out and run the trails. But before we approved that event, we did have them send us their COVID protocol, and we read and approved it. And once we saw that they, you know, really had their act together, we were very excited to have them come out. And last year, we did not run our kayaks, but this year, we're opening it back up. We've gotten some electrostatic sprayers, so our kayaks and our live jackets will be sanitized after every use. So we're pretty excited to get people back out on the water. In the past year, we've done a lot as far as our enhancements and achievements. I'm pretty excited. As I think you all know, we were awarded the Recreational Trails Program Grant for $300,000. We have gone through the final design process. Our bed packets are all ready. They were a little late due to weather and some other events that happened, so we did not put them out this spring because there's no way I could run this, plus our busiest time of the year. So we will put those out in the fall, and then we anticipate the completion of our ADA Trail, which will be a half-mile paved loop with pollinator gardens, with interpretive signage, and with benches along the way, to be open in January of 2022. So we're super excited about that. We did update all of our security cameras. Our security cameras before were kind of piecemealed. I had two different systems, depending on where the cameras were located. So some I could access by my phone, some I couldn't, I had to be online. And so we went through and redid all of our security cameras. So at any point, I can go on my phone, I can see every single place where we have a camera. They have night vision, they have sound, and it's really proving to be a wonderful way to monitor the park after hours. We did update all of our, or upgrade all of our internet equipment this year. It was really dated, and most of our equipment has been discontinued. And so if something went down, we couldn't replace it. With all of the virtual learning that has been going on, we've had a lot of families that were virtual learning or have opted for online school. And so they were coming out and camping at the park while they were educating their kids. And so we felt it was very important for us to be able to provide high-quality internet and Wi-Fi while they're out there. We also have a lot of students from OSU that choose to come out, sit in our pavilions, do their homework and things like that. So we really felt that this was something that would be very valuable to our community and our park users. So I'm excited to say it's up and running. And now this summer, my staff won't have to spend hours every week making sure that this radio cycled through and that this one is speaking to this one. And so it's just going to be much more efficient. We renovated the East Bait Shop. I don't know if any of you have been in there in a while, but I don't think it's ever been touched since it was first built. And so we went through, we really cleaned it up. We sanded and painted all of the paneling. We pressure washed and stained the floors. We took out all of the big bulky shelving, and we built shelves in that are much more streamlined. It smells better, it looks better, there's a lot more space. And so if you get a chance to come out, please take a look. We're really proud of the work that my maintenance staff did, making sure that all of this happened. We also built a new east camp post site. We have one on our west side, but our goal is to have a camp post on each side so that in both west, both recreation areas, that we have 24-hour presence so that when our staff isn't available after hours, somebody's available to answer questions, to diffuse any disturbances, to make sure that everything is going the way it's supposed to. So we are still looking for that perfect person to join our Lake McMurtry family. But, I mean, look at the view you would get every day. So if you know of anybody who might be interested, it's a full hookup site. We provide internet, we have sewer, we have water, we have power. It's a great place. So just put that out there. Throughout the last year, we partnered with a lot of new OSU student groups. They weren't able to go on their retreats, they weren't able to do their overnights, they weren't able to do a lot of the things they normally do when they have new students coming in. So we met with them and, you know, shared that we had a great space where they could come out, they could bring their groups, still socially distanced, but still have that fellowship that they were trying to get, especially for their new students. So we worked with OSU Camp Cowboy, OSU McKnight Scholars, OSU Crew, the Center for Ethical Leadership, PLC, the Kuwait Student Association, and the Middle East Association. Some of them would come out and volunteer for a couple of hours, and then we would provide them with, you know, guided hikes or different activities. But it's been a really great way to introduce Lake McMurtry a lot of the new incoming students. And so we were really excited about our progress there. And then we worked with OSU a lot in some of their research. So we had Flathead Catfish Research, we had native fish populations research. We have our water quality monitored on a regular basis by the Department of Environmental Sciences. And then we had frog research going on out there. And we're working with another group that wants to do some tick research out at the park. So we really provide a lot of benefit to a lot of different user groups, and I think we're really making an impact and increasing our presence. We weren't able to do our normal Santa in the Park where we have cookies and hot chocolate and Santa for photos and hay rides and all of the, you know, fun Christmas activities, but we still wanted to give back to the community. So we did a drive-through light display, and we had everything decorated from the entry booth, the pavilion, the restrooms, the bait shop, and then our east RV loop was, I think it was fantastic. And so we did not charge admission, we just wanted to give people a fun place to go for the holidays. And so in the two nights that we had it open, we had over 300 cars come through and experience our light display. So our goal is, if we can get the funding and the sponsorship behind it, to go even bigger next year, to have a more, you know, just a, we would love to get our whole east side decorated and just provide that to the community for the entire month. So fingers crossed. In April, we had a bird watching hike, and we had a very good turnout for that. There's a lot of amazing bird watching out at Lake McMurtry. And Dr. Scott Los from OSU led our group. And May is very busy for him, but we will plan a lot of other bird watching hikes come this fall. We had a kid scavenger hunt over a weekend in April where they could download and print out the Lake McMurtry bingo. It was self-led. We really just wanted to get families out to the park, get them engaged. If the kids filled out their bingo cards, they could turn it in at our bait shops and get 10% off of adventure camp. So we had a lot of families that came out and took advantage of that and just enjoying the park and doing the scavenger hunt. We had spring celebration this year. It was very cold and did not feel like spring, but we had it. Last year, we couldn't due to the pandemic, and the year before, we had terrible weather, and so we had to cancel as well. But we had food trucks, we had live music, we had different environmental groups with educational displays, a lot of local vendors. It was, it was really a fun time. I think everybody that came out had a good time. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to have all of our inflatables again, our face painting, and do all of the normal spring celebration stuff. We had our first backpacking clinic, and it was fantastic. It was actually a large group of women that wanted to learn how to backpack. And so they came out, and it started with a meet and greet on Wednesday, and then on Saturday morning, they met at the Red Trail Head. It was led by our Outdoor Recreation Education Director Connor King, and then our local backpacking guru Jason Judd. And so they hiked the Red Trail, they learned a lot of survival skills, they learned water filtration, they learned how to set up camp, how to cook over a campfire. They set up tent, or set up camp by the dam and then hiked the Blue Trail on Sunday morning and came in, and we're already getting ready to do another one because everybody was like, oh, my gosh, that was the most fun, we want to do that too. Stand-up paddleboard fit was something that we started last summer. It was something where everybody could socially distance, but still get out and have a good time. It was very well received, and so we have our first stand-up paddleboard fit class for this summer, taking place at the end of this month. So we're super excited about that. We have a fleet of stand-up paddleboards, or you can bring your own. There's just a cost difference if you rent ours as opposed to bringing your own. But it's a good time, and I did not do it because I would have been falling off the whole time. And then, super excited, we didn't get to have adventure camp last year. This year, we're having adventure camp, and it'll be five weeks instead of four, and it will be from 8:00 to 3:30 instead of half-day. It's for kids ages seven to 12. It's a lot of STEM learning and nature, hikes, kayaking, fishing, different games and activities each day, and we're really excited because the final week of camp, we'll be welcoming the deaf and hard-of-hearing community, and we'll have translators, we'll have deaf and hearing counselors that do ASL. And so we're really gearing this up for that community, and we're super excited to continue in our efforts to be more inclusive and provide something for everyone out at Lake McMurtry. And we already have 45 registered, and so, I mean, it fills up pretty quick. And we're working on our ACA accreditation, so they'll be doing slight visits this summer. And if we pass all of their requirements, then we will be an American Camp Association-accredited camp the next year, which lends a lot of great credibility as we're going out. So anyway, those are the things we have going on at Lake McMurtry. And if you have any questions?
Counselors?
It's always so, it's always so fun to have you here and learn about everything that you're doing out at the, out at the lake. I think it's so special how intentional you guys have been to bring programming to this resource. Because it's one thing just to have it sitting there, but it's a completely other thing to have it programmed and to be bringing people into our community, visitors, and just people that live in our community. So I'm, I'm so grateful for the work that you guys are doing. I love that you're finding additional ways to be inclusive. I know it's, as I think about our special needs community, it's, these outdoor spaces, I think, are so important as we transition out of the pandemic, to have these outdoor spaces for them to get outside and leave their houses and feel comfortable and safe. So I'm grateful for that, too.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your support that you've given us, you know, over the years. We are so thankful for everything that you do for us. And our winding road is getting fixed this week.
Yeah, it is. All right. Well, thank you so much, Jill. We really, we do appreciate that. We appreciate the updates, and you guys have been doing great work for the community during very difficult times. So we really do appreciate it. Thank you. Next up, we have an annual report from the Stillwater Area Sports Association from Carolyn Wallsted. Carolyn, I'm a little upset with you before you start. Because you scheduled all my kids' baseball games on Monday nights.
I'm so sorry. We'll work on it.
I just got a text that he made it out at second playing shortstop. I missed it. I'm not going to blame you, though.
Sorry. I am Carolyn Wallsted, 1310 Falls Drive. I'm the Executive Director for SASSA. But why isn't my presentation coming up? I'm clicking it, there it is. SASSA is Stillwater Area Sports Association. We handle the youth and adult sports of the city of Stillwater. It's been nice to be outside. I, first of all, just want to applaud you all for serving at the council for, during this unprecedented time. And my report isn't going to hamper on the negative. It's going to show you all the positive that we were able to do during that time. But thank you for your confidence in, in allowing us to participate and offer during the pandemic because I do believe strongly that it was an outlet and it was a sanity that was so needed for the children, but also for the families themselves. So these are just kind of our numbers I did for 2020 and then also up to 2021. And I don't want to go over each of them, but COVID did definitely have an impact on SASSA. I mean, we, we had a dramatic drop from their numbers once it happened. And then once people saw that we were able to still participate and in a safe manner, our numbers started to increase again. So we did have a deficit, but we turned the positive into the negative that we could. And we are definitely on the rebound for 2021. All of our numbers for the spring are, are higher than they were before COVID. And we're offering tennis for the summer months and excited for our baseball tournaments. These are some of the capital improvement that we have done, and we did not do any major capital improvements last year, honestly, reserving funds, just, but we do have some planned. So for the future use, our capital improvements, investments, since SASSA was originated in 2014, is over half a million dollars that we've put back into the organization, city of Stillwater, and for our activities. And I just did our annual gross income for 2019, 20, and 21. The blue is the allocation that we received from the city, and the orange is what SASSA's registration and facilities rentals have, have incurred. And I did want to let you know that we've had 167 youth participants that have participated in sports, either at a full or a reduced percentage. We do follow what the city has had set in, in place prior to that, and we follow with the partnership with the schools. If they're on free and reduced, then there is a discount for the child to participate. We did lose one of our favorite senior league softball. He was a member of many, many teams for many years, and his family chose SASSA as their memorial. So in lieu of flowers, and once we designate where our senior league will play, there will be a plaque, Charles Porter, but he was a very special man. So participation per year, just kind of, so you can look at, sorry, it's kind of small, but I, I went from 2013 when we began to where we are now. And as you can see, even during the pandemic, our numbers were increased from where we were back in 2013. And the orange, which is used baseball, just for example, that's only our spring season, and we have a fall season. So prior to pandemic, we were, we were above at 817, and we're already at 744. So I do believe that we'll surpass our numbers. This is just serenity, it is normality. It's just a great picture. It's a family affair. I do want to brag, you know, we have lots of partnerships with OSU also. We host many tournaments for them. We've done dodgeball, they've rented the Armory Gym for some outings. Since their Colvin Center was closed, they've been in our gym using it for youth basketball, for adult basketball, they've been out on our fields for kickball. But if you kind of, just putting in perspective, we've currently hosted four tournaments. One weekend, it rained on a Friday night, and on Saturday, we had 94 teams in Stillwater, and we did 166 games in 48 hours. So in perspective, that shows a lot of organization through getting it done. And we used every field that we had for that 94 team. This past weekend, that's why I'm red, we had a baseball tournament. I was out in the sun, tried to wear a hat, but it's still. But we are in great partnership with the, with the city of Stillwater, with Stillwater Public Schools. We host, they use our field for JV baseball out at Wittenburg. Our junior high softball, we hosted five games for them at Babcock when there was a conflict with Big Couch. So we're excited to have that partnership. Just going to the baseball tournaments, we still have two tournaments left. And actually, three, because this one didn't include my one that we had last weekend. And in 2019, we had 179 teams total that came into town. And currently, we've had 194 when I presented this slide, but we had 11 last weekend. So we're already surpassed that. I will just let you know Joe's, Eskimo Joe's Tournament, which is June 4th, 5th, and 6th, we're already at 97 teams, so it'll be a busy weekend. The economic impact, I did get this from the city of Stillwater. So just for the three tournaments that we had shown with 194 teams participating, that's over a million dollars of the anticipated and sales tax at $38,000. Youth activities, this kind of, if you think of us, or think of me as an event planner, this is the total participants, so the total number of teams that we have times 12, times eight games a week, times eight weeks of practice. Event coordinating wise, we've planned for just this spring over 59,000 events for a family. So if you think about the number that we are impacting in an activity that's outside for them. OSU, we have a great partnership. We've got softball clinics that they'll do. I hire OSU tennis players for their summer months. It is compliant, and I am compliant on that. For our SASSA tennis instructors, we were able to give some of the baseball teams discounted tickets as they came in town. Coach Holliday was so excited to see many, many youth players at the game in their uniforms. And we will host some youth south, youth cowgirl team softballs at the airport because they need our fields. SASSA was one of the founding fathers for the youth activities of Stillwater. And I just wanted to remind you all that that's kind of a one-stop shop. That's, anyone can apply, anybody can post their information on that website as a As a mom, if you're trying to find some camps or something, you can go onto that website and it'll show you, and the link is directly, you'll go to their, their website directly for any questions. This is just some of the things that we do. We have pickleball in the morning, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Now they're starting on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. Joey Graham does a basketball academy in there. Because of the pandemic and when we were in red, we weren't able to partner with Stillwater Public Schools. And so we did have our youth basketball league in the SASSA Armory Gym, which was a challenge, but we made it work, and I think it was a great experience. I know that people were very thankful to be able to play during the winter months and always appreciated the support. We have morning walkers that come out every morning and walk in the Armory Gym. But these are our plans for 2021, now that we feel we're pretty stable. I was able to receive a grant from the Brown Foundation to replace the Armory Gym floor. That is out on bid, and we opened those bids on May twelfth, so we're very excited for that. So again, thank you for the Brown Foundation. Once that project does begin, I would, I will be doing a bit more publicity to thank them for that. We are looking at shade structures for Wittenburg. We are hosting a pickleball tournament. I've got youth volleyball academy scheduled for July. We've got field improvements going at every field except airport. We are hosting five U-Trip tournaments. We'll have a youth softball tournament in June for our leagues. I've hosted two adult softball tournaments currently. And Joey Graham's going to do a basketball academy during the summer months. So the gym will be used and our facilities will be used pretty, almost twelve months out of the year. Thank you for your confidence and belief in SASSA. And sun is arising, we are through this pandemic. And thank you to my board and the three Amigas for SASSA.
Excellent. Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Counselors, any questions?
No, I just was brought back to junior high and high school when I played in the Armory. Played volleyball and basketball and, no comment.
Did you? Well, the gym floor will be very nice. We're trying to use the same specs as the elementary schools. So that will be the gym floor, and it'll be very much appreciated.
So exciting to have a private partner that's willing to come alongside and help improve our facilities like that. That's really exciting.
Yeah, I'll say, just from a public-private partnership standpoint, this is an irreplaceable asset to our city. You know, not only the, as we were talking about earlier, the, the health benefits during times of quarantine or pandemic, but outside of that and during times of normalcy, just the overall health benefits of getting out of the house, children running around, it is unquestionable the health benefits that are, that are associated with that. So we certainly appreciate all you guys do with SASSA. And I'll be the first to say that, or one of the many, I guess, to say that we greatly appreciate this partnership and all you guys do.
Thank you. I really appreciate your confidence, because I know the easy answer would have been no, let's not do anything during the pandemic. But I believe that we, we did the very best. We had minimal incidents, we were very transparent, we sanitized, and made the experience positive for all. So thank you again.
Yeah, I was going to add there, Carolyn, that you and I have had a number of-
More conversations than we wanted.
Well, I always loved talking to you, but we've had a number of very difficult conversations.
Yes, we have.
And you all have been somewhat in the middle of, you know, trying to protect community safety, but also trying to provide activities for families. And I know it's not been an easy place for you all to be. I will say, as I've said to anybody who's asked me about it, that you all, you and your board have been just outstanding in terms of helping us deal with the safety precautions that we need to deal with, but also finding ways to be creative and figure out how to do stuff. So, you know, we played flag football in the fall, we're playing baseball now. My family has tried to take advantage of those things, and we felt like they've been handled very well and that you guys have done what needed to be done to protect the safety of the community, but also provide the services that you provide. So it's, personally, I appreciate the cooperation and just the willingness to work together with us through this, from you, from your board, from your staff. It has been absolutely, just unprecedented and terrible time to try to figure out how to do what you do. And you all have done an excellent job at it, and we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I think we had to think about a positive out of all of this.
The last two reports, your report and Lake McMurtry, it's showing that individuals are showing, I mean, they're valuing getting out, and I hope that that trend will continue and we won't go back to staying inside. So obviously, the value of being outside and being healthier and being active for families and youth, hopefully is a trend that will continue. And in these two reports, it looks like you guys are doing everything you can to make sure that that does happen, and so that's, thank you for that.
It does my heart well to go by and see the parks full. And I mean, there are people with their lawn chairs all the way in the outbuilds. So it's done, we've done it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, we are now at item eight C on the agenda, which is approve recommendation alternative on Western Road as instructed by council at our last meeting. And I think Monty is online to talk us, talk to us about the alternatives for Western Road.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Hello, Monty.
Good, good to hear you guys. It's, unfortunately, I can't see you and I'm picking up some echo, are you guys? Okay, I'll go ahead. Per our last meeting, the mayor and the council asked us to take a look at whether or not we should proceed with the recommended overlay of Western Avenue concerning that, that, that street will someday have to be rebuilt. So we looked at the, the cost to reconstruct the street. It's about seven million dollars. Design life is thirty years. It'd be a three-lane section from Thirty-second to Twenty-sixth, five-lane section from Twenty-sixth to Nineteenth, have the ten-foot active transportation path to full length on one side, between north of Twenty-sixth, on the east side, we'd have a sidewalk for a little bit of a section through there. Would look at the intersection of Twenty-sixth and Western, probably has signalized. We compared that against three, two, three other options. The first one that we presented was basically overlay what's there. We looked at another ultra-thin bonded overlay concept called a Nova chip that'd give us about seven, eight years for a little less money. And our surface would cost a little less and give us about a three-to-five-year extend that, that pavement life. The, I think what it basically comes down to is how quickly would we see reconstructing that section of Western? And if it was going to be relatively soon, we might want to pick options three or four and get us through the interim. For sure, that section of Western is on the Stillwater Transportation Enhancement Plan for improvement as the Southwest develops. And, and we have the developments that are working their way through the system between Twenty-sixth and Thirty-second on the east side, and one of those is, is under construction. But the step plan also identifies that from Twelfth North to Sixth is very near its capacity, and it's a two-lane section as well. And it will exceed its capacity before this section of, of Western to the south. In addition, when we had the Transportation Town Hall meeting a while back, this section of Western really wasn't on anybody's radar, nor was it mentioned. We had several other projects identified in the community that would, might have a higher priority than this. Add to that, we really don't have a funding source for seven million other than the half-cent sales tax or take away from other projects from the general fund. So if we did the half-cent sales tax, we're talking about two years, basically, of, of payments going to that, which really impacts our overall payment management plan. If we are successful with a concept of adding another half-cent sales tax to do the sixty-million-dollar projects that we're thinking of and have on the books, this project would likely be towards the end of that, in the ten-to-fifteen-year reign. So when, when you look at that, that would say we go with the recommended mill and overlay that's in the pavement management plan to give us that extended life until, you know, we have the funds to reconstruct it and it meets some of the priorities. And I'm happy to take any, answer any questions and, and proceed accordingly.
Thank you, Monty. We appreciate you taking the time tonight to, to walk us through some of those options. Counselors, do you have questions for Monty? I think, I think the general feeling is, gosh, it would be nice if we had better options.
You know, I have that same thought every week.
I mean, it, it does feel like we're continuing to just sort of put Band-Aids on, on things that, you know, we really need to reconstruct at a deeper, deeper level. But we don't have the funding to do that, and we need to, we've got to keep roads in shape while we're figuring out how to fund the bigger projects. So it's certainly a, a lot of detailed information here that kind of adds to that, but certainly sounds like your original recommendation is probably the best way to go at this point. Although, I don't know if other counselors feel the same way or not.
Yes. Yeah.
We'll get you a million dollars, can you do it, Monty?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch all that.
I think he's actually not kidding, but it doesn't matter, anyway. All right, so we would need, I don't remember, based on how we approved the pavement management program last time we talked about it, would we need action here to just say, include Western as presented?
Select the option that you want, you've already authorized the funding.
Counselors?
Motion to approve option two, the mill and overlay as suggested in the FY twenty-one program. For, do I need to say anything else?
I think that's good.
Is that good?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to choose option two here, which is the mill and overlay that was described in the fiscal year twenty-one pavement management program. Any further discussion? Teresa, can you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that, that item is approved. Thank you again, Monty.
Thank you.
Item eight D is approve reallocation of the Stillwater Home Buyer Assistance Program, Path Two Low to Moderate Income Home Repairs Funds. And we'll have Cindy Gibson back up. This is like your, you've been up here more tonight than any meeting.
Good evening again, Cindy Gibson, Community Development. In 2019, the council started the new City of Stillwater's Home Buyer Downpayment Assistance Program with an education component. This program has been eagerly and widely received and utilized by many in the community. So here this evening is a brief update. Unfortunately, a lot of the in-person classes were canceled due to COVID. However, we were able to develop an online training component that has been highly utilized. Out of sixty-two registrants for both in-person and online, we've had thirty-nine of those online with success, excuse me, successful completion of the testing component. For the down payment and closing cost assistance for Path One, low to moderate income families, we've been able to provide assistance to seven families for first-time homeownership. Total assistance awarded was a little over thirty-five thousand dollars. Our Path Two was low to moderate income for home repairs. We had received one applicant for this, but she chose to withdraw because she was applying for down payment and home repair and could only use one option or the other. She chose to do the down payment. Path Three is first-time home buyers to Stillwater. We've been able to provide assistance for four families for a total of a little over twenty thousand dollars. So basically, this evening, we're asking, since no funds are really being used out of Path Two, if we could ask the council to reallocate the twenty thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars sitting in that path unutilized and redistribute it for Path One and Three to provide down payment and closing cost assistance. There is no budget impact, is there, is approved funds? And we have made provision in the next budget year to continue the program if that's the council's desire. So this evening, we would like to ask for a motion to approve, excuse me, approve reallocation of the home buyers' assistant Path Two funds equally to Path One and Three, and also approve the adjustment of funding for Twenty-two based upon the percentages in your report to reallocate based upon the way the program is used. We have more applicants, we should be able to appropriate more funds. Any questions?
Counselors?
So just one more question, so if the funds are there for Path Two right now, would be reallocated to One and Three?
Yes.
For twenty-twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, we're just going to decrease the Path Two funds to five percent from the previous twenty-five percent?
Correct.
And to date, none of the Path Two funds have been used?
No, sir. We had one applicant and she qualified and replaced her roof, but her contractor worked with her, so she said, I, I would like to have somebody else utilize the program. So she withdrew her application, so.
Are these percentages approved every year, or are they?
These percentages were approved when the policy and program was put into place.
Is there any flexibility to have ranges instead of specific, so that?
The way we have it set, set up in accounting is there's three different accounts to track the funds, and so we like to get council's directive and use a specific amount for each fund. And like tonight, with this money being underutilized in Path Two, we come to you to ask, can we redistribute that for the budget year?
Did we turn anybody down in the other paths because we didn't have funding available for them?
Unfortunately, we've had to. We have, in fact, right now, an applicant for Path Three that only has a balance of seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that family's maybe, maybe not going to use it. They don't, they haven't decided yet, it's their option. They are approved, but it's their decision to use, utilize it or not.
Hannah, most people were interested in rehabbing their houses, I'm surprised at that.
We were too, really, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I wonder, well, it's, it's hard to say why that hasn't been used. I mean, that was new to this program, we hadn't had that before. I think that was kind of a, a novel use of this, this sort of thing. So I'm glad to see that it's still in there. I want to, you know, I think we should still be trying to promote that and let people know. Maybe there's folks out there who just don't know that they could potentially get that money. And then, you know, if, if we start to see it pick up more, we can always allocate more funds back over, back over that way. But I also appreciate the flexibility here with you all noticing, you know, these issues coming up and us being flexible enough to change the allocations and make sure we're putting the money where it can be used the most.
Yes, sir.
Will the people that were, that were denied due to lack of funds be notified? Or I'm sure they'll be given the opportunity to reapply through Path One or Path Three. Um, is there any kind of notification to those people to say, hey, you may want to put your paperwork back in, or?
We, we could do that. Path One still have funds available, there's not been anybody, we've had to say, sorry, we don't have the funds. And we have had this budget year, one family that we had to say we don't have the funds because the seven hundred and fifty was already appropriated for someone. We could reach out to them. A lot of it is going to depend on the timing for their closings.
Yeah.
So, you know, but to let them know that it would be available, we would certainly do that.
All right. Any further questions on this item, counselors, or is there a motion?
Motion to approve reallocation of the Stillwater Home Buyers Program Path Two funds equally to Paths One and Three and approve adjustment of fiscal year twenty-twenty-two funding percentages as indicated in the report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Teresa, please call the- Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Next up, Item 8D, overview of body worn cameras for the Stillwater Police Department. Chief Watts?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counselors.
Watts, Chief of Police. Okay, so this is kind of a breakdown of the cost for implementing a body worn camera program for the Stillwater Police Department. Currently, our camera status is that all of our patrol vehicles, which includes both K-9 units, have a WatchGuard camera system in there. It's a car camera system, which, so total, we have 65 units that have car cameras. We currently have two body cameras, which are for the motorcycle officers because we can't have a car camera on a motorcycle, and then two cameras for our special projects unit, which are undercover officers when they're working interdiction or criminal interdiction type cases, and then one body camera for our lake officer. Some of the pros and cons of the car cameras, the in-car camera system, it provides exceptional video of any event that's occurring right in front of the patrol car. It's robust. They typically last about 10 to 12 years with their pretty low maintenance. They're more stable, provide a clearer picture of events that are occurring in front of the camera, traffic infractions, drunk driving, things of those nature, get captured very well on the car camera systems. But they can only capture what's directly in front of the car. And the audio device that the officers carry allows them to still record things audio that are outside of the camera, but it diminishes quickly as they get further and further away from the car. Once they get inside a building, get some distance from a car and there's obstacles in between, the audio diminishes pretty quickly and a lot of times just completely goes away. So we're proposing in our, in Capitol Projects, we asked to add 90 body worn cameras to our cameras systems, and that would provide body worn cameras for all sworn personnel, and then also make them available to our specialty units such as code enforcement, jail personnel, and animal welfare. And propose using WatchGuard as a sole source. Since we're already using them, we already have all of their software and all of their programs in-house, and we're very familiar with the operating procedures. We have good luck with them. It seems to be working very well. They're also one of the very few vendors out there who allow us to house all of our data onsite as opposed to a cloud storage that they control. So that is a big benefit for us there. Plus, using a WatchGuard program would expedite the process of getting the body worn cameras in play once we got the equipment because we're already set up to do most of what we need to do. Some pros to body worn cameras in the past, they were very expensive, especially the cost for storing data. That was our most prohibitive obstacle to overcome. It was millions of dollars where now it's much less than that. Some of the numbers we're looking at is closer to 190,000 as opposed to what we were looking at just a few years ago. So it's made it a lot better for us. The technology advancements have significantly reduced those costs. Body worn cameras have an additional level of transparency for the police department that I believe our public is accustomed to seeing body worn cameras. They expect that transparency and we want to be able to provide that. Allows police trainers to learn from officer interactions with the public. Video provides opportunities to review these interactions and develop new training protocols to help us better serve the public and provide more efficient services. And that allows us as leaders to review current policies, practices, and procedures to ensure that we're providing the highest quality service to our citizens. Total estimated cost for body cameras, storage upgrades, and internal upgrades is $379,030. And I'd be glad to answer any questions related to our request to move forward as we kind of go forward looking for body cameras.
Thank you very much, Chief. I appreciate you coming and kind of providing this information. This is, this number's already in the 2021 budget, so it's already this far along so far in approval. But I did, I do appreciate you kind of coming and letting us know kind of where we are with the project. Counselors, any questions about body worn cameras?
I'm always so grateful when you come to speak because it's a part of our city that, you know, the average citizen doesn't know a lot about. And so it was nice to learn a little bit more about kind of the benefits of the body worn cameras and kind of what our current status is. Just, it's always interesting to kind of learn what you're all doing.
We've seen the car cameras have been just a huge benefit for transparency, and it's helped citizens understand officer interactions. Sometimes it takes them seeing it from all the different perspectives. It's been a huge benefit in the court systems, and it just, it just bolsters our transparency and it's been, it's been a phenomenal system, and this just will help us take it to a whole new level.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Not just standing in the current situation, I think these are becoming more essential parts of what you need in order to do your job and.
Absolutely. And I'm finding more and more that, you know, our officers are, they're really, really pushing for it. You know, they, they want to feel protected. They want to feel there's transparency there. They want to, they want the public to see what they're doing, how they're doing it, their interactions, and it just helps, helps them feel more secure in what they're doing and know that they can, you know, back up what they said occurred.
I think, I'm really glad you said that. I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that this item is not something that, you know, the council said, hey, you guys need to go do this. This is something that our police, yeah, I mean, our department is proactive about transparency, proactive about best practice, trying to, you know, provide the best professional policing service to our community that you can. And I think that's, I think that's great, and I think, you know, part of the problem we have right now is that the public at some, in some places at least, views police as maybe not being that progressive or not trying, you know, to bring these kinds of programs to, you know, on themselves that somehow you have to be pushed into it. But that's not the case here. And we really appreciate the fact that your department and what you're doing there is proactively pushing for these things as well and not just, you know, dragging your feet.
Yeah, like I said, our officers are looking forward to this as an opportunity to, like I said, be more transparent, and then it, it has no real negative downside other than there are some concerns about some privacy issues, you know, and, you know, people's video being seen about the worst day of their life because of open records. But we have to be transparent, and that's just the cost of being transparent.
Sure. Well, thanks again for coming and chatting with us about it, and we look forward to seeing that program implemented. Before we let you go, you've got Item 8F on the agenda as well, which is approved budget amendments reflecting an increase in donation revenue. That's always a thing we love to hear about here.
Yeah, and this one, you know, we talked about this earlier where Janson's Toyota and Barry Patent Farmers Insurance wanted to donate a DUI simulator to us and then donate funding to buy a trailer to house that DUI simulator. Unfortunately, they weren't able to get the simulator purchased by the end of the year, so they just donated the money to buy the simulator. Well, then at the same time, Janson's reached out to Toyota Dealer Match Program, and they ended up matching Janson's donation of $10,000. So we actually were able to get a bigger donation to set this up even better. So really what this, what this report is for is to take all that donated money together, create the fund, and to start buying the DUI simulator and the related equipment out of that. Unfortunately, the cost of trailers because of material has just gone through the roof, so we're going to hold off on buying the trailer right now. We want to get the most out of the donated money, but we want to go ahead and buy the DUI simulator. And Officer Hooton's been working with the high school. It's going to provide a room for us to set it up in and still be able to use it until the price of the trailers come back down and we can buy a trailer to house it in and make it a mobile unit. So what we're asking for is a motion to approve amendments reflecting an increase in donated revenue to the amount of $13,743 and expenditure appropriations in the amount of $13,743.
All right, counselors, any questions? As the parent of a soon to be 16-year-old, I'm excited for him to get to use this at the high school.
I'm thinking the same thing there. I have one that's going into driver's ed here shortly, so.
I always kind of wondered how your body can provide.
Oh, you, yeah, you think that?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommended approval of this budget amendment. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Thank you, Chief. Item 8G, approved Stillwater Public Library Application for a National Endowment of Humanities Grant. Stacy Delano might be joining us online.
Yes, I'm here.
There you are.
Hi. Good evening, and you all are able to hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. So, good evening, and the library is just here seeking approval to apply for the National Endowment for the Humanities American Rescue Plan Grant for up to $200,000. During the pandemic, our librarians identified several technologies that would have provided fuller and safer services to our patrons, but that would be equally beneficial in non-pandemic times and providing more modern services. Our grant proposal will include two major components. The first will be a consultant to contact focus groups and surveys to establish the technologies that community members believe would make, would fulfill that dual role for them, the results of which will form the basis for a new and updated strategic plan and in grant seeking plan. And then the other portion will include the installation of radio frequency identification, tagging on all of our material, which will allow us to immediately offer self-checkout and do very quick annual inventory, and it'll position us to be able to provide self-check-in, wayfinding, shelf, readers advisory in the future. So we would just like to get approval to apply for that grant.
Counselors, any questions?
Motion to approve Stillwater Public Library request to apply to National Endowment for the Humanities American Rescue Plan and Humanities Organization.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this grant application. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that grant application is approved. Thank you, Stacy. Good luck.
Thank you.
Item 8H, approved budget amendment allocating $300,000 from TIF number three for payment of the apportioned increment proceeds for the affected taxing jurisdictions in Payne County, Stillwater Public Schools, Meridian Technology, and the Payne County Health Department. Melissa Reams.
Good evening again, Mayor and counselors. If you will remember, back in July of 2018, the first ad valorem slash sales tax, TIF, was approved here in Stillwater. Those taxes that became part of that increment were our 2019 property taxes. Because this type of a TIF is so new to Stillwater, staff has been working collaboratively with the county treasurer's office as we develop a formula and a format for identifying taxes that relate to the increment, which again, is the value of property over the benchmark value established by the county assessor. And I'm happy to tell you that we are getting ready to make our first distribution to the affected taxing jurisdictions for funds received for fiscal year, or for calendar year, sorry, 2019, and calendar year 2020, taxes in that increment district. Those will go out, I'm hoping they're going to go out with tomorrow's accounts payable batches, and we should see those go to the authority on Thursday. But to do that, I need to ask this evening for you all to allot $300,000 to refunds in the sole and separate account that's been set up for the increment. And the budget amendment before you does reflect that. So it's a one-sided entry. We already have gotten the revenue in, and you're allotting the revenue to this refund category. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counselors?
The $300,000 accounts for two years, you said?
Correct, it does, yes.
And then will we need, will we have to do this every year going forward, or do we have to?
Yes, yes. And I need to check with Finance Director Cluck and make sure that we put something in this fund for our fiscal year 22 so that we won't have to come back to you and ask for that out of sequence.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve budget amendment allotting funds to facilitate the payment of the apportioned increment proceeds to the affected taxing jurisdiction. Stillwater Public Schools, Meridian Technology Center, Payne County Commissioners, and Payne County Health Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this budget amendment. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved.
And thank you so much.
Thank you. I feel like there should be some sort of memento for having your first motion approved as a city counselor. It's like the baseball.
Dumbled right through.
All right. Eight, where are we? Eight I, update on utility disconnections from Becky Taylor.
Good evening again, Mayor and counselors. Becky Taylor, Chief Civic Innovation Officer. I wanted to talk to you this evening about the moratorium on utility disconnection. Last December, with the onset of winter and to assist those who were experiencing economic trouble due to COVID-19, council decided to place a moratorium on utility disconnection. The moratorium, in addition to Phase 1 of the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program, was a multifaceted approach to help residents of Stillwater who were experiencing financial hardship stay warm during the cold months without fear of getting their utilities disconnected. Four months later, staff thought it timely to bring this to you for discussion and with an update on where the city stands due to the moratorium that was placed on both residential and commercial accounts. As of April 27th, 342 residential and commercial accounts had a past due of more than 120 days equalling $146,115. 556 accounts had a past due of 90 days equalling $92,214. 870 accounts had a past due of 60 days equalling $152,46. And 2,119 accounts had a past due of 30 days equalling $381,539. At the time this report was written, all delinquent accounts totaled $771,914, which were past due by 30 days or more. For any past due amounts not paid by account holders, the city would realize a loss for these amounts. Dana and her team in Utility Billing Services have held off sending discontinuation notices to account holders, but in the last full billing cycle, if notices were sent, she would have sent it to 1,734 residential and commercial accounts with the average bill being $333. With the option for utility assistance soon through Phase 2 of the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program, the warmer temperatures, and the need to try to recover some of the costs lost over the last months, it seems timely to enter into a discussion about the possibility of ending the utility moratorium. Dana and her team are diligent in working with residents to get their bills paid. This slip, which is also in your packet, has information regarding resources in the area and where to look for help, and it's readily available if someone needs it. Payment plans can be created to help assist customers when they are experiencing an unexpected financial strain, and when Phase 2 does begin, that information will be available to residents as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Dana is also here as well if you have any questions.
Thank you, Becky. Counselors?
Is there any way to know out of the 94 accounts, how many were reoccurring before the pandemic started so that we have a better idea of what, I mean, truly who was devastated by the, is that now?
Dana, I don't have that information.
Okay.
When we lifted the moratorium the first time, we had like a special payment plan option, didn't we, that we put in there? Is that something we would plan to do the second time, or can we plan to do that?
We can if you'd like.
I think, because that was, we kind of gave people the option of signing up for a little bit longer-term repayment of whatever's outstanding.
Did people utilize that extended plan?
Good evening, Dana Maddox, Utility and Billing Services Director. So, the plan, if you kind of remember last time, was the long-term, depending on how much they owed. So, that plan, we did, if it was like $150 or less, they did $25 plus their current bill, and then we tiered that out based on their account balance. We had like 74 account holders that signed up for that payment plan, and of those, 35 actually defaulted, and we ended up either disconnecting or closing their account and turning it over to collections, but.
So, about half the, half the time it worked?
Yeah.
So, if we, if we were, there's a resolution on for later, if we were to repeal the moratorium, how quickly would we start seeing people get disconnected?
So, an example would be if you said to start like July the first. So, we have a schedule out for the year. So, like our first notices would go out on July the second, and they would not be scheduled to disconnect till July the 19th. So, it's about two weeks from when we send the notice out. So, depending on when you wanted to reenact that process.
What would timeline be once the grant program is in place, assuming June 1st-ish? What's the timeline for someone getting reimbursed if they were to apply for utilities reimbursement?
It should be fairly quickly, once they fill out the complete application and we have the process in place. And we're working on that right now, making sure we have all the systems in place so that once the application opens, it can move as quickly as allowed with the pieces in the application.
We'll have the money on, from the grant program, right?
Yes.
So, we'll have to send off their application somewhere, wait, like we get the paperwork, we stamp it, we write them a check, basically.
Yes, so the grant administrator would approve based on the criteria, send that to the city of Stillwater, and we'd have our internal process for that check to be made directly to the landlord or to the utilities.
That assistance was, it was low, just low income threshold, or low and moderate income?
Low and moderate.
We don't, we don't have any sense of the, from the utility numbers, who might qualify for the grant. We don't really know any of that. Okay.
And I will say, there is a, a Community Cares, which I think is using some of that same grant money, that we have started seeing promissaries come in from them, and we do have some information at the customer service windows and some pamphlets that people can pick up, and also it's for rent and utilities. So, that's another opportunity that people could possibly get some assistance from.
Yeah, it's an unfortunate reality that we have to pay for the service that we provide, and having over $700,000 on the books in receivables is not, not something we can carry long-term, so it seems like it's probably time to do that. I guess, I don't know, if we do pass the resolution to lift the moratorium, how do we handle the, put the payment plan thing in place and start doing that in July, or, I mean, is that just a staff decision, or do we have to pass something else on that?
It's just June 1, because of those timelines, it would be July before somebody was actually cut off.
Okay.
I think, if I remember what Dana told me this morning correctly.
Yeah, so if we sent out notices like on June the 21st, the first disconnect date would be July the 6th. So, just kind of depending on, we would, you know, work it, every week, we would have a different set of disconnection notices, but.
If we put the payment plan option that we used last time back in, when would those start going out? Would they go out in the, at the same time that connection notice? Is that how we did it? When you got the disconnection notice, you also got the, you can set up a payment plan?
I think we went ahead and advertised that before, so people could go ahead and get those in place.
Okay, yeah.
So, we could put a notice in with the bill, can do, you know, the social media and let people know.
Yeah. But that seems the most reasonable to me.
I agree, I think that, I.
I recognize the extended payment plan might be challenging for bookkeeping and keeping track of all of that, but it does seem as though those numbers probably warrant giving them a little chance to catch up.
And, I mean, if they do qualify for the grant funding, that would, they'd just pay the whole bill, right? We'd just get, would, would get paid directly from the grant for whatever they owe, right?
Yeah, so what, what typically would happen is the agency would just notify us that they've qualified, and that they would be sending us the money, and then we would just note your account so that that disconnection would no longer be valid, even though we may not have the money in hand, the promissory will hold.
Okay. Anything further, Councillors? Thank you both. All right, that takes us down to item nine on the agenda, which is resolutions. First up, we have a resolution number CC-2021-13, which is a resolution notifying the public of the compiling and publishing of the code supplement number eight to the code of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma. Mr. Dorman, I don't know if you want to give us just the 30-second version of why we have to compile and publish the code?
We have to update the code annually, and so when we do that, we have to go through a process where the public is notified that the code has been fully updated, and so that's what we're doing here.
And it takes like the ordinances that we've passed in the last year and changes that were made and kind of put them all into a more permanent publishing?
Yeah, it's all, it's in the bound version of the code now, and it's also on the online version, so we're up to date as of your passage of this resolution tonight.
Okey-dokey. Councillors?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC-2021-13. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti.
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake.
Yes.
Councillor Jaloski.
Yes.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, resolution CC-2021-13 is approved. Item nine B is a resolution CC-2021-14, which is a resolution approving reinstatement of cutoff notifications and resuming disconnections. Councillors?
Motion to adopt resolution number CC-2021-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti.
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake.
Yes.
Councillor Jaloski.
Yes.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, resolution CC-2021-14 is adopted. Item 10, reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman.
Pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B1, for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Stillwater City Manager Norman McNichol and City Attorney John Dorman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McNichol?
Just a brief update on activity at Block 34. As you know, the trust has not met the past year due to the pandemic, but just last week, the trust began the process of scheduling a meeting. And weather has delayed things, but there is equipment actually on Block 34, waiting to level it, and we will be bringing to you at the next meeting bid recommendations for turf and irrigation. And the other thing that we're really excited about, we continue to have promising discussions with developers who have presented preliminary plans that are compatible with that that the Council on Block 34 Trust has considered. And we're making progress and hope to continue that in the future. Those developers, obviously, we're under an NDA, but those developers, I think, are probably eight months, nine months out from a complete proposal.
I'm just looking for a nice, smooth surface for the Mary Main Street activity here in a few months, right?
Exactly.
If it's warm.
Thank you, Dorman.
Thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Zanotti.
Yes, the weather is warming up, and it's a great time to get outside. Did you know that Stillwater has 23 park and lake recreational locations? Here are a few reminders before your next visit to any one of the 23. Pets must be kept on a leash except at the Still Wagon Dog Park. Please do not feed the geese. If you see a problem in your area or something that needs to be repaired, visit stillwater.org and click the Who to Contact tab at the top of the page to report it. And please help keep the parks clean. If you bring something with you, make sure to take it home with you or throw it away in a trash can.
Some good reminders. I was, I was at a park in Midwest City this weekend, and they actually had big signs that said, "The geese are known to be aggressive," which I thought we might need on a couple of, but, "Don't feed the geese, please." Councillor Wedlake?
Yes, sir, thank you. If disaster hits, do you have a dedicated safe area? Now is a good time to make sure it's registered. The information you provide will be used by rescue personnel responding to the disaster area. Safe areas can be an above-ground safe room, below-ground storm shelter, basement, or any other area of your house determined to provide protection from disaster. Registering is easy, just visit stillwater.org/shelter.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Jaloski?
Yes. The City of Stillwater will be offering an OSU student move-out special at the Convenience Collection Center located at 807 South Perkins Road. All throughout the month of May, students with a valid OSU ID will be able to drop off furniture, appliances without freon, mattresses, computers, televisions, and stereos for free. If you have questions about the event, contact Waste Management Director Chris Knight at
Please use the service.
Please.
Councillor Hawkins?
If you're looking for a way to get more involved in the community and have a love for the library, apply to join the library board. We are currently looking to fill two vacancies. The library board has supervision and control of the public library, appoints a librarian or librarians, and may adopt regulations for the administration and operation of the library. Term length is three years. Learn more and complete your online application at stillwater.org/citizenboards.
Excellent. I will remind everyone, or I guess notify everyone, that they need to save the date for this year's Fourth of July celebration. We're officially planning to have Boomer Blast, the fireworks show, in 2021, this summer. The city will keep, will keep you updated through stillwater.org/news and social media accounts to let you know all the details, but get, get ready for a fireworks show this summer. All right, at this point, I will recess the city council meeting, and we will move over to the Stillwater Utilities Authority Agenda, and I will call the Stillwater Utilities Authority to order. On the consent docket, we just have one item of minutes. Is there a motion, trustees?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti.
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake.
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski.
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the minutes are approved, or the consent docket's approved. Item five, general orders, approve items associated with the College Gardens water and sewer project. Mr. Millis.
Good evening, I'm Bill Millis, Deputy Director of City Engineering, here this evening to ask you to authorize an amendment to the professional services agreement for the College Gardens project. To briefly recap the project, it's the area southwest of campus, and the, the yellow area includes replacement of all the water and sewer lines, and the purple and green areas include selected water line replacements. The project was authorized in late 2018, and design is in progress. Tonight, I'm asking you to authorize the addition of water line and sewer line relocations in the white area. That's along Sixth Avenue. It's approximately 5,000 feet of water line and 3,000 feet of sewer, and it will address the western portion of required relocations to accommodate the upcoming ODOT project on, along Sixth Avenue from, I think from western to Perkins. And this, obviously there from the map, the white area is adjacent to the area that Kimley Horn, the consultant has already been studying and doing sewer modeling of the wastewater collection system. So, that's why it's convenient to put this portion of the Sixth Avenue project in this contract. We've scoped it so that this area can be bid and constructed separately, in case the timeline doesn't allow doing it all together with the big project, and that's honestly, that's more likely how it'll happen. Here we have the strategic priority we're addressing with the project, and also some of the reasons for the bigger project itself, the College Gardens. The, so this amendment would be for $167,700 for the amendment itself, and would also include contingency on that amount of 10%. There are sufficient funds in the Water and Wastewater Fund, and we would come back to you in the future to request authorization for construction funding, and it's possible that for this portion of the project, we might need more easement purchases, and so we would come back to request funding at that time. At this point, I would try to answer any questions, or I can read the recommendation if you'd like.
Go ahead and read the recommendation for us, Bill.
Yes. Okay, staff recommends a motion to authorize the general manager to execute Contract Amendment One at a fee of $167,700, authorize total project expenditures of $3,187,770, and approve the related budget amendment.
Trustees, any questions?
I might.
I'm sorry?
No, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, just to be clear, the extra $167,000 allows for the engineering of that new portion, so that the design's ready to go when we're ready to actually do the project.
Exactly, the amendment is just for design of the, of the white portion along the highway, and that to, so that total includes the wider project.
Yeah, the total is the whole thing, but.
Yes, sir, and that three, that's a big number, that's 3 million plus, but given that we're doing water and sewer, and added these extra areas that need immediate attention is really what makes that, you know, be such a big number, plus the complexity of a neighborhood that was built in the 20s.
I was gonna say, I mean, the, so the 3.1 number includes construction of?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. It does, it doesn't include construction?
It doesn't.
Not on the new portion?
It does not include construction. It includes engineering design, permitting, bidding, construction administration.
Ah, construction administration.
Which means support from the engineer during.
There's not a comma between those two words. Because I was gonna say, that sounds really low.
I think you all tried this earlier with Monty.
All right, any further questions, trustees? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the staff's recommendation on this item. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti.
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake.
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski.
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, this contract amendment and budget amendment are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Item six A is Resolution SUA 2021-6, resolution approving reinstatement of cutoff notifications resuming disconnections. Trustees?
Motion to adopt SUA 2021-6. Motion to adopt SUA 2021-6.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Theresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti.
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake.
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski.
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, resolution SUA 2021-6 is approved. Are there any reports from officers or board? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the SUA. Theresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti.
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake.
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski.
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting is now adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene the city council meeting. We are at item 13, executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session for the items stated on the agenda?
Motion to enter executive session.
Second.
With a motion and a second. Theresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti.
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake.
Yes.
Councillor Jaloski.
Yes.
Councillor Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, we'll now enter executive session. Thank you all for being here.